Okay. I'll just repeat myself again, just really quickly. This is our Transportation Committee meeting. We hold our meetings at the first Thursday of every month. It's usually the first committee meeting within the NCSA. Before like the monthly meeting. And tonight, we're going to be having a gondola talk, pros and cons. So Lisa, before I started recording, I was about to mention that David Grantis can make the presentation tonight, and he was supposed to be speaking for the gondola. He's from the Zero Emissions Transit. I think it's mission. Yeah, ZET. But we do have Stop the Gondola, and they have a pretty they have like a bigger presentation from last month that they could all speak on. So I would like to have everyone in the chat just write down their names. What and what neighborhood council that they're either a part of or they live within, and then also any questions you might have about the gondola or any concerns you might have. So that way I don't have to, you know, go through all 48 participants and like ask for some introductions. And if I could have the Stop the Gondola people kind of do like a brief and just introduce themselves verbally. Oh, Gesentite.
Thank you.
Um, should I start?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
I'm Phyllis Ling. I'm a resident under the root of the gondola. How about, let's see.
You could popcorn it.
How about John Christensen?
I'm John Christensen. I teach and do research in UCLA and the Institute of Environment Sustainability. No less than Center for Innovation, and I'm also an interested party in the Historical Cultural North Neighborhood Council.
Thank you.
How about you, Junie?
Everyone, I'm Junie Wong. I'm a community organizer in Chinatown with Power LA and also with CCD, which stands for Chinatown Community for Equitable Development. And I will pass it to John Given.
Hi, everyone. My name is John Given. I'm an attorney, actually. My client with respect to the gondola is an organization called the L.A. Parks Alliance, which is a member of the Stop the Gondola Coalition.
And I think Kathleen.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Johnson with Los Angeles River State Park Partners, which is the support organization for L.A. State Historic Park and the two other parks on the river. And I belong to the Historic Cultural North Neighborhood Council.
Thank you. Um, well, you know, without further ado, um, you guys are, you know, free to present the Stop the Gondola presentation that Phyllis had spoken to me about via email. And so Amy sharing her screen and then will you guys like prompt her to change the slides?
We can do that.
Okay, okay.
Does Amy have a link to the presentation?
Amy, are you there? And sometimes Phyllis like co-hosts with the neighbors at her house. I'm not sure if something is happening in the background there. Phyllis, are you there as well? Maybe running the tech.
Oh, no. Yeah, no, I'm here.
Okay.
Um, let me try to find that.
Oh.
I just put the link in the chat. I could also run this if you want.
Yeah, I'm trying to load it. Let's see who gets there first.
Oh, sorry. I got confused because I think the file was renamed, so I was looking for the wrong file. Oops.
Muriel, you want to take this minute to talk about our community guidelines?
Oh, goodness gracious. Um, okay. Let's see. Okay, so I'm just gonna go over like a brief community agreements. Um, I understand that we have a lot of people, but ideally we would like to have people turn on our camera and turn on their cameras to show your face so we could build community. Oh, my God.
Oh, and maybe I should mute everybody. Do I need to mute everybody? Should I?
Oh, okay. I don't know if someone is okay. I thought someone is yelling. Okay, sorry. Um, I got distracted.
I can mute everybody and then you can unmute yourselves if you need to just so I'm going to mute everybody and then you'll need to unmute yourselves, which you can do. Sorry.
Okay, um, so again, if you've, if you guys can turn on the camera.
Muriel, you're going to be muted and you'll need to unmute yourself. So be prepared. Sorry.
Okay, so while the Stop the Gondola people tried to pull up their presentation, we have our community agreements, which is basically turn on your camera, show your face.
Sorry, Muriel. Can you not see it now?
I still see Amy Ho's screen.
No. I'm trying to share it.
Oh, shared screens. Okay, I could switch it to you. Actually, oh, there you go. Okay, I see your screen now.
Okay.
Does everyone see John's screen? Hopefully.
Not to see Amy's.
Oh, there's there should be like a view options bar and you would you could just click down and then choose stop participants sharing.
Option, okay, from the
So it says few options and then you could choose John Christensen.
Got it.
Okay, great. Um, okay, I'm just gonna do go over the community agreements. Okay. So show good intent, give people the benefit of the doubt. Three, demonstrate respect and appreciation. Four, refrain from having too many side conversations in the chat. Five, listen intently. Six, step forward, then step back to contribute, let others do the same. Seven, speak concisely, and then eight, have fun. So without further ado, this, you know, I think it's actually working with the agenda I actually had planned out, so here's Stop the Gondola.
I'm sorry, I can't. I don't have it on my screen. Could you repeat the directions of how I get off of this person's screen?
Okay, so there is view options. So I'll say you're viewing, I assume it says you're viewing Amy Ho's screen. So there's a view options to the right of it. You click down and then you you click for John Christensen's screen.
I just have the view. I'm sorry. I just have the view of
Kathleen, it's at the very top of your of the Zoom window. There's like a green bar that's
Oh, okay, got it. Sorry. Thank you.
Took me a moment as well, so.
Oh, sorry about that. I was trying to type the instructions into the chat. Okay, I'm ready to start it off.
Go ahead, Junie.
Great.
John, uh, yeah, thank you, everybody for having us. Uh, you've heard us all introduce ourselves. We're the Stop the Gondola Coalition and just some of our members, actually, and you'll hear more about that. Uh, yeah, can we start with the first slide? Uh, so to start us off, want to catch us in the history or the historical context of this project. We know that the residents of La Loma Bishop and Palo Verde, uh, that area is kind of colonially known as Chavez Ravine. That name was actually made to also continue to erase this part of the history. The indigenous peoples there were removed using eminent domain in order to build public housing, but that was actually a lie because then that land was transferred to a private entity in order to build what is now Dodger Stadium. And in addition to that, Chinatown actually used to extend further east all the way to Union Station. And Union Station itself is built on Old Chinatown and the eviction of peoples that used to live there. So Dodger Stadium and Old Chinatown and now L.A. Arts proposed gondola is this next step in this repetitive history. And we know that the Dodger Stadium parking lots are have intention to be developed and built on top of. And we shouldn't accept that as this sort of like continued part of our future. I want everyone to remember that that land was taken from those families supposedly for this like public good. And then that was a bait and switch, so a private developer could come in and profit. And if we allow something like the gondola to be built, it would be detrimental to the environment as well as the surrounding communities. And yeah, I just also want to name that we are in coalition with Buried Under the Blue, who are the descendants of the people who used to live on that land. And with that, I would like to pass it to Phyllis, who is our founder.
Thank you, Junie. So a little bit about the coalition. Um, I started Stop the Gondola in 2021 just as a website to share information about the project. But it was also out of frustration about the lack of transparency and how this project was being presented to us as a done deal. So what started as a website has grown into a very diverse coalition. It includes 29 member organizations plus many individuals like myself and my neighbors. And now more than 6,000 community members have expressed opposition to this project. Our coalition has a steering committee that includes L.A. Parks Alliance, Power, Neighborhoods Rise, and Self-Help Graphics. And some of our coalition members are shown here. Next slide, please. So, um, some background about how we got here. The project was first announced in 2018 as a concept, but most residents didn't actually hear about it until 2020, when Metro and L.A. Art announced the environmental review. Somehow the project was pushed forward without feasibility study, and there were very few details in even in 2020 when they announced the environmental review. But the two potential routes were already selected, and that was done without ever talking to residents. And then likewise, we got another surprise in 2021 when L.A. Art announced that they would locate a station at the entrance of L.A. State Historic Park. That had, that was something that had never been discussed publicly prior to that announcement. And then just over one year ago in October 2022 was the release of the draft EIR, which was the first time most of us had any real information about the project to comment on. And now we're waiting for the release of the final EIR and a vote by Metro on whether to certify and approve the project, whether to certify the EIR and approve the project, which we're not sure. It may or may not happen by the end of this year. Next slide, please. So here's an overview of the gondola project, um, which is like a massive ski lift between Union Station and Dodger Stadium. The route is 1.2 miles long. There are three passenger stations starting from the bottom of the map. There's the Alameda Station in the middle of Alameda Street in front of Union Station. There's the Chinatown Station, which Chinatown State Park Station, which is at the entrance of L.A. State Historic Park. And then there's the Stadium Station at the edge of the Dodger Stadium parking lot. The Broadway Junction is a non-passenger angle station, and it's how the route makes that bend at Broadway. And then there are three towers, including two 200-foot tall towers approximately on Alameda Street. And the system is proposed to run 19 hours per day year round, not just not only during baseball season. And there would be up to 52 cabins circulating on the system at any time. And next slide, please. So here's a 3D model we created to show the 98-foot-tall Broadway Junction in a residential neighborhood. Um, this is actually where I live. Gondola cabins would circulate through the noisy open-air station 19 hours per day from 5:00 a.m. until midnight. This is where the motor would be located that pulls dozens of five-ton cabins all the way from Union Station, which is about a mile away. And the cabins would hang 49 feet above the ground here. Um, this is a huge invasion and risk to impose on residents. Next slide, please. Um, so yes, residents oppose the gondola, and there are many reasons. We're concerned that L.A. Art isn't taking safety and security seriously. For example, um, when will they do maintenance if the gondola runs 365 days per year, which is what they've said repeatedly? Most gondola systems have to shut down for weeks every year for regular maintenance, and they're not really acknowledging that there's a lot of downtime involved in gondola systems. Also, how much security will there be to protect the infrastructure? There's a gondola in Canada, the Sea to Sky Gondola. It's been sabotaged twice in 2019 and 2020. Someone came and cut the cables at night and they were, they still haven't been caught. I believe there's a $500,000 reward for them. And then another major concern is wildfires. Uh, we're in a very high fire hazard zone right next to Elysian Park. So residents are concerned about how the gondola will impact firefighting with what especially with water dropping helicopters, which often fly over our neighborhood. And then there's also significant construction disruptions, noise, vibration, dust, and road closures. Um, there's also the noise that I mentioned from the stations with machinery that's constantly running to circulate the cabins and then noise from the cabins themselves. Plus, they would need to remove some trees by the freeway in the path of the gondola, which increases noise for residents nearby. And as you can imagine, there's the invasion of privacy and airspace issue. The gondola is a slow-moving freeway in the sky 19 hours per day. We've been given assurances that they'll use smart glass to fog up the windows, but really no details about how it would be implemented and maintained to make sure it operates properly. And next slide, please. So here are some images that show how low these cabins would fly over the neighborhood by Broad by the Broadway Junction. And then next slide. And here's an image of the Alpine Tower from the draft EIR. This is a 200-foot-tall tower that leans directly towards Metro Lofts, which is a senior apartment building in Chinatown. This leaning tower and almost the entire gondola route, for that matter, is in earthquake liquefaction zone. So not only is this an eyesore, the tower looks like a giant sledgehammer aimed directly at Chinatown seniors, which really can't be good Feng Shui. Now hand it off to Kathleen. Wait.
I'll take it. I want to apologize for my voice. I'm in the fourth day of COVID. Unpacked Slovid, so hopefully we'll get better sometime soon. I really wanted to be here and I'm really grateful for your having us for this conversation. I'm here because I've really been looking forward to tonight because it would have been the first time the gondola proponents participated in a fair, balanced, and open discussion. In the last several years, um, they've gone to extraordinary lengths to deny the public this opportunity. They've ghosted and gaslit us, told us it's a done deal. So I'm not surprised they suddenly couldn't find someone to stand in for Mr. Grantis. They don't care about real community engagement, and they don't care about sustainability. But I'm still delighted to have this opportunity, especially because we know you care about sustainability. Let's be honest with each other. We all recognize the hour is getting late. We need real climate solutions, not expensive gimmicks that take precious resources and don't solve the problem at hand, which is what the gondola is. It won't decrease traffic. Uh, it will move traffic into neighborhoods. It won't reduce traffic or greenhouse gas emissions. And this is a result of research from the UCLA Mobility Lab that we commissioned independently at UCLA because we couldn't get any information out of L.A. Art and and the McCourt Group. We found it would not take a significant, the lab found it would not take a significant number of cars off the road because it is likely to car carry far fewer passengers than L.A. Art claims. Many will likely drive to stations to get on. It's full of all kinds of bad assumptions, really questionable assumptions. You know, I mean, one example is that it assumes, you know, a large number of people will, you know, take public transit, 68%. When the National Household Travel Survey and other data shows that, you know, very few people will, uh, you know, take that that, you know, those, uh, the that length of ride on public transit, especially what involves the kinds of switchings of of modes and and lines. No gondola system in the world operates at L.A. Arts maximum capacity or serves the stadium. And people will not space themselves equally over the two hours before and after Dodgers games. This means, as the Mobility Lab study found, that while, you know, about half of the people who are likely to take the gondola to the stadium will not take it back. They'll most likely be looking for a ride share, which completely negates any gains you got from, you know, getting cars off the road. Here's an example of queuing at Metalete Telepedico in La Paz. So we oppose the gondola because of these environmental, you know, one because of this green lighting, I mean, you know, sorry, greenwashing. And because, you know, the heavy burdens it imposes on communities. It doesn't connect to essential services. It's a, you know, a private access to a private sports venue. It doesn't improve parks' access via transit as L.A. Art claims. L.A. State Historic Park already has a metro stop nearby. And it invades historic neighborhoods, disadvantaged neighborhoods, low-income neighborhoods with unnecessary permanent infrastructure. And thousands of new concrete would increase heat island effects. I'm gonna turn it over to Kathleen to talk about L.A. State Historic Park, because I know you don't want to listen to this voice all night.
Thanks, John. I I feel for you. You sound terrible. But yes, so I'm really here representing the defense of the park. We feel that this represents an existential threat to a public taxpayer-funded green space that residents fought for 20 years to enact, fought a warehouse development. And all of the 100-plus community meetings that went into the use, the planned uses and view sheds and spaces to which this park would be put. So it's it's being characterized, all of these park impacts, by the way, in the draft EIR are characterized as, quote, "not significant." So we, of course, have the opposite view. So the whole southern end of the park would be taken up with this 98-foot-tall giant structure. And then the route would fly cabins just 26 feet above where people, families picnic on the knoll directly underneath. They would impede the iconic view sheds, whether it's the downtown skyline, Elysian Park, the Broadway Viaduct, all of these incredible resources that compelled the state to invest in this park in the first place. And operationally, there's very little information about the operational restrictions that would be required at the park for the gondola running through it, this aerial highway through the southern section of the park. So we have a lot of events at the park, and some are the larger revenue generating events on which the park maintenance and free community programming is absolutely dependent. So we anticipate that this will be really impeded. Again, where the where the park station is located had very little public comment. And if you can go to the next slide. This is a view of, you know, just how low the cabins would fly and what the southern end, this very, you know, green colic scene at the southern end would now be a giant hardscape piece. If you could go to the next slide. These are the over almost 100, over 80 mature native trees that will need to be felled to make space for this hardscaping. Even their tree mitigation plan makes no sense. Mature trees are, um, you know, you're losing 10 years of growth and mature trees. So even a five-to-one remediation does not make sense. Also, all of the park is planned as a balance between areas of respite, free, open lawns. You can't just take 100 trees and put them somewhere else in the park and preserve all of those original uses. But I think in in essence, what we object to is the is the usurpation of public parkland for a private enterprise, especially one that goes to one private sporting destination and does not connect in a two-transit, true transit sense to to connecting commuter lines, for example. So I will turn it back over.
To Junie.
Yeah.
To Junie.
Yeah, so you've heard about how this is an attack on our parks and also our neighborhoods. It's also an attack on me and you and all your friends because it is an attack on taxpayers. The construction costs of this project keep going up. It's now at $500 million when it was originally 125 million. So that's four times the original cost. The operating costs are still unknown. There's no funding plan and no estimate for tourist fares. So for non-Dodger fans, we have no idea how much you would pay. They've only confirmed that Dodger fans can ride for free, but that's not really, we don't really know how that's financially sustainable. The project is very much a bait and switch. L.A. Art has been collecting signatures based on the promise that it's 100% privately funded. But now they're quietly starting to admit that this may need public funding. They've transferred the project to this nonprofit called Zero Emissions Transit, who was supposed to be here today, but we are not able to hear anything that they may have to say from themselves. So it's very likely that it falls on us, and we want everyone to know that the bottom line is that we, the people, should not be used and should not be paying the price for a private billionaires pet project. None of this is in the community's priorities. Could we go to the next slide, please? The gondola is also an attack on our local businesses. The gondola basically plans to use Chinatown as an extended parking lot for Dodger Stadium. The gondola customers who aren't interested in taking Metro rail or buses would basically have to drive to the gondola and take up parking in our neighborhood that our local businesses need for their customers. Our businesses don't want their property taxes increased to fund the gondola either, which is typically what happens when the cost of these things overrun. Plus, the tourism benefits of this project are exaggerated. So for one, the gondola flies over and bypasses businesses in Chinatown. And logistically, most Dodger games are on weekday evenings, and folks are coming from work, don't have that much time. But the folks who do arrive early will probably want to hop on the gondola early to avoid long lines closer to game time. So they likely would not pregame in Giant in Chinatown or Olvera Street and patron our legacy businesses. There's also major disruption to our small businesses that could come from the construction period of this, including during the Olympic season. And basically, all around the gondola is a tool to supercharge development and accelerate gentrification in our communities. It's a shiny new toy that's used to market luxury development in the area. We already know that Freckment Court is buying up properties near the gondola and plans to build luxury apartments. And just as John emphasized, the are imploding climate disasters and catastrophes. If we do not act, we are also under a major housing crisis in the area. Chinatown is 95% renters with the sixth highest rate of evictions. And the rent freeze that was proposed at City Hall yesterday also did not pass. So all these are up against the people that live in the neighborhood, and we can't afford for any luxury development like the gondola to come into the neighborhood. And so with that impact on the neighborhoods, I'm going to pass it now to John Given.
Hi, everyone. Uh, so as I said, I'm I'm an attorney, so I'll try to honor your request to be concise. It's not always easy for a lawyer to do that, but I'll do my best. I'm going to talk a little bit about the flawed process and and the the draft EIR, at least at this point. We haven't seen the final EIR yet, and we're not quite sure when it's coming out, but we have heard end of the year or possibly beginning of next year. So what are the problems with the draft EIR? Well, it's grossly inadequate, and we've listed a few of the problems here. And I think, you know, uh, we have published, we we wrote a pretty substantial comment letter during the comment period for the draft EIR, and we could probably throw a link to the one that we have up on the L.A. Parks Alliance website in the chat. If nobody does that, I'll do it when I'm done talking. So this is just really a couple of the points that we raised, and there are a bunch of other really excellent letters in the record, including one from Doug Carstens firm. I saw that Doug joined us this evening, so glad to have you here, Doug. Uh, Doug Carstens firm. I saw that Doug um joined us this evening, so glad to have you here, Doug. Um, uh, among others. So there's a whole laundry list of things that are that are wrong with the draft E I R, but. These are a couple of the of the major ones. One fundamental issue, and I think this is really the the primary one that that bothers me. Under California law, C Q, we talk about, a project is the whole of the action, right? That means that an E I R has to disclose the direct impacts of a project as well as the foreseeable indirect impacts. This draft E I R didn't discuss the possibility of future development of some portion of the hundreds of acres of parking lots around Dodger Stadium. That would likely follow development of a gondola phase here. So under C Q, it's really improper to leave out a big part of a project that will come later. Because that avoids discussing the potentially significant impacts associated with that part. We call this piecemealing. Why is this so important? Well, by leaving out the discussion of the potentially massive development at Dodger Stadium, we're not really getting an accurate idea of the real number of car trips. For example, associated with the entire project. And therefore, none of the information the draft E I R presents about diminishing overall number of car trips or greenhouse gas emissions. Can be complete or accurate. It makes the draft E I R uh really a worthless document in terms of. Uh, detailing what they say the benefits of the project are. The draft E I R also claims that there are no significant impacts to L A State Historic Park. Uh, as long as there's a new general plan that would mitigate everything according to the E I R. But that's clearly wrong. You've already heard uh about some really massive impacts to the park. And um, it's also just not proper under California law for a state historic park to be used for things that don't contribute in some way. To the historic mission of the park. So a gondola is not needed for transportation. We already have transportation to the park with a subway stop right there. Um, and even if the gondola didn't destroy trees, habitat and protected views of the L A skyline. A project like this simply can't use the park because it's not associated with the historic purpose of the park. So to say that the major land use conflicts could possibly be papered over with a new park general plan is simply wrong. And it just kicks the can on studying and mitigating park impacts down the road to California State Parks. But deferring any real analysis and mitigation of the impacts on the park would be improper. There are also far better alternatives to move people to Dodger Stadium from Union Station and and even other parts of the city than the gondola project. And uh, John, I think John will be talking a little bit more about that in a moment. But the draft E I R even admits that the superior environmental alternative is an enhanced Dodger Stadium Express. Um, and um, you know, the draft E I R actually argues that that alternative is infeasible. In my view, it primarily does that by having a very constrained and unimaginative idea for how that. Uh, you know, enhanced Dodger Stadium Express could work. Um, there are also some real process problems here. Metro actually turns out to be the wrong lead agency to do the environmental review for this project. California environmental law requires that the correct agency has to be the environmental review process. The law requires that the public agency with the greatest responsibility for supervising or approving the project as a whole should be the lead agency. Preferring an agency like the City of Los Angeles that has a lot of very specific authority over a an agency with just general authority like Metro. The E I R assumes that the Metro is the is the best agency, but Metro actually has very little direct responsibility over all the. Various approvals that the project would have. They just have a couple of approvals, whereas the City of Los Angeles has many, many, many approvals. Um, the appearance is that L A art prefers Metro, perhaps because its review process seems to provide for a lot less transparency. Than if the review had been done by the City of L A. And most of us are probably pretty familiar with the city's process. There's a lot of hearings that happen. Before you get to uh, you know, the certification uh of an E I R for a major project like this. At Metro, we've had very few public hearings uh before the decision makers and. Lo and behold, here we are almost poised to certify, you know, a final E I R that is only going to come out in, you know, some number of weeks or months. So all along, the project has really lacked transparency, both because of L A arts and Metro's approach to their public process. As as was already mentioned, the routes were selected without really significant public consultation. There were just two options that were presented. Basically, both the same route, just deciding a different part over. L A State Historic Park to use for the for the route for the gondola. And the main difference between this, of course, is just the way in which L A State Historic Park would be negatively impacted. Doesn't really change the nature of the impacts, just where they would be experienced within the park. There were also very limited opportunities for public input. Early meetings were mostly over Zoom. And when L A art Metro held in-person meetings, public comment wasn't presented in public before an assembled audience. It was always behind a curtain somewhere. Where it wouldn't be heard by the other community members. And as was also mentioned, whose project is this? Zero Mission Transit actually doesn't have control over this project. It has not been transferred to them. There's just discussion that at some point it might be transferred. Um, that's a process that has to happen between Metro and L A art. And Z E T or whatever nonprofit might take over this project at some point. But why anybody would want to transfer a project like this to a nonprofit that's never built or operated to transit? You know, of any type, let alone a complicated five hundred million dollar gondola, I don't know. Of course. L A art never built or operated such a gondola either, so maybe maybe they don't think it matters that much. To many people, I think gifting this project to a nonprofit with zero experience in infrastructure construction seems like maybe a sneaky way. To kind of greenwash the project and and perhaps also to start seeking public funding. We can go to the next slide, John. So if the gondola isn't really going to help overall with transit, as you've heard, uh, or reducing greenhouse gases or getting cars off the road. Why are they going to all this effort? Well, most people know Frank McCourt used to own the Dodgers and after the Dodgers went bankrupt and he sold the team to new owners. The sales deal allowed him to hold on to ownership of a fifty percent share of the two hundred and sixty acres around the stadium. Used almost entirely for parking lots. McCourt's company, McCourt Global, is a development company. So as it turns out, a mass transportation stop to Dodger Stadium is really the key to unlocking the development rights. So that a significant amount of the acreage can be developed for something other than parking, which is required to be used for now. There have been a bunch of articles about this in the L A Times and other media and, you know, probably you've read some of those. Uh, this idea of developing the parking lots has been around for many years and the gondola really could be the key to moving that forward. But for this project's environmental review to document document to be adequate, this clearly foreseeable future phase has to be included. Um, I'm going to turn it back over to John. Thank you so much.
I'll subject you to a little bit more of my voice and then I'll I'll stay quiet. Um. There is a good alternative, uh, that could benefit the community and how and this lower impact alternative should be. Should be considered. It should be studied as an alternative for sure. Um, and that is to expand the Dodger Stadium Express into a zero emissions electric bus fleet. And use those buses on name, get na- non-game days out in the community to accelerate the transition. Of our bus fleet um to to all electric um zero emissions buses. Hollywood Bowl has a park and ride service that can, you know, that is similar and could be replicated for venues. Throughout L A County um like Dodger Stadium. And with existing technology to speed bus platoons to events. Uh, the L A Times has written up the uh has has written about this. Um, a- as well, uh, it gives uh, the buses are connected through the cloud and it gives them. A priority uh at to, you know, time green lights so that they can. Uh, that they can uh come in and um, you know, short platoons of buses. Um, and where possible, on dedicated uh bus lanes, and they could come from all parts of the county, um, not just from one spot. Um, and and um, you know, th- there are also other alternatives that need to be, that ought to be looked at. You know, improving bike lanes and sidewalks. Consider a more per uh more simple people mover such as an escalator. Like at the Hollywood Bowl. The Chinatown Metro Rail uh A Line Station is only point six miles from the stadium. Um, you know, it's in walking distance. Unfortunately, the walk is, you know, uh. Somewhat hostile for mere mortals um and could be vastly improved to make it an attractive way. Uh, to walk from Chinatown, to walk from the Chinatown Station. And in that way, it it could also, you know, benefit um Chinatown businesses, you know, rather than this thing that's just gonna fly over them. Junie.
Uh, uh, yeah, so all in all, we need your help to support equity and fairness. And to use all of your power to ask Metro not to certify the flawed E I R. We don't need to support this project. And if you're wondering what you can do directly, you can send a letter of opposition to the project. To L A art at metro dot net. And I can also type in the chat, you can address um the Dr. Corey Zelmer. And then if you could go to that link on the third bullet point to sign our petition at stop the gondola dot org slash petition. Very hard to remember. Um, and yeah, those are the things that you can do to help us to support. And I, is that our last slide? Okay, I will pass back to Phyllis if you have.
Yeah, I think it isn't. Yeah.
Great, thank you. And yeah, we're we're really glad to be here with you today and um would be happy to answer any questions that you have. Okay, I guess there's a hand from Charles Miller.
Hi, uh, I appreciate the presentation and appreciate the the work everybody put into that and all the thought they put into it. A couple of things jump out to me. First of all, um, I my my perspective on it is I live in Palms. I do go to Dodger games occasionally. And I always take public transit when I do. I have long found it a very frustrating thing as an Angelino that. Uh, an embarrassment, actually, that our public transportation doesn't extend to our major baseball stadium. Um, in a way that many other cities do and that it's something that has needed to be addressed. When I take public transportation from Palms to Union Station and then take the Dodger Express Bus. That one and a half miles that that express bus takes takes longer than the entire journey on rail from Palms to Union Station. Both ways. So it is a real bottleneck that is a disincentive for people to get out of their cars. Um, I I definitely am sympathetic to a lot of the arguments about the lack of transparency on this and that's very concerning and I appreciate you raising those issues. Uh, some of the arguments were not as persuasive to me because I felt like some of them were NIMBY arguments that we hear for every metro uh project. Uh, that being said, uh, with respect to the one thing that was particularly interesting to me that John was talking about toward the end. Was supporting an alternative project that would be more pedestrian focused. Uh, like increasing a pedestrian corridor off the Chinatown stop. And putting funds into developing something along those lines or at least advocating on behalf of those. My question to you guys is, um, would those still have the same issues? That uh, that you're citing as reasons to not support this line in terms of development in the state park, in terms of disrupting. Uh, the neighborhoods, in terms of potentially drawing people to park in that very same area. And then to take the pedestrian corridor instead of taking public transit to get there. So I I feel like a a lot of the things that you say are reason not to support the gondola would cancel out any kind of public transportation. Between Union Station and Dodger Stadium. So I'd like you to speak to those issues if you can.
Yeah, I mean, I I think, um. The, the, um, you know, I I. I mean, first of all, Charles, it it's 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 really great that you 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 make that trip. Um, you're you are you are an outlier among public transit users. Um, but it's it's it's, you know, I I think it's the future and if we can find ways to. Make it easier for people to move in that direction and um, you know, the that that um. That, you know, that's that's where we need to go, you know, and um, I, you know, I. If you look at the. The massive scale of this. Um, it's not just like not in my backyard. It's like, you know. You know, it's it's don't destroy a state historic park. That, you know, park poor communities in Los Angeles. You know, organized and fought for and got built and the citizens of California have been invested. Tens of millions of dol- you know, dollars, dollars in. So that the scale of the impact is, you know, one thing that is entirely different from the alternatives. Um, I I think in 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 many ways, you know, I we could, I think it would be an interesting conversation to have and I. I it would be wonderful to have that conversation, maybe a different one about, you know, what would all those alternatives look like? You know, our main point, I think, would be that. That this uh, E I R should have studied those alternatives more, uh, you know, more. Uh, you know, exhaustively and and fairly than it has done, which was basically to dismiss them and only. Study uh one al- one alternative. Um, I think that the, that the um. The 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 bus technology, um, which is already being deployed in parts of the city. Um, and and the people who do that are talking with Metro. Um. You know, could could make a lot of sense for for people coming from different parts, different parts of the city, people who use that, who say, um. You know, it makes the Hollywood Bowl experience a lot better. Uh, you know, for instance, um, you know, and and after. Driving and and um, parking there for a recent concert, I I would have to agree. Um, and and I think that, you know, that that that, you know, the whole. You know, it it's you'd have to, you'd have to look at the specifics, but I don't see any way, you know, personally, I don't see any way in which. You know, uh, you know, better pedestrian access, better safer pedestrian and bicycling access. Would be a problem, you know, for the neighborhoods or for the park advocates. You know, both of whom, you know, see this, uh, you know, as it's it's more of an existential threat than just something that they don't. It's not like we don't just like, you know, we don't, it's not like, oh, we don't like this. It's actually, these are, this is a serious threat to. The, you know, to the to the community and and the park. And uh, you know, at 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 the scale and it's, you know, there are better alternatives. And on its own, it's actually not, you know, a uh, a clean energy alternative.
Can I add that, um, I think the gondola technology just doesn't make sense in this context. To serve a stadium, that's a point we made and it the capacities that they quote are maximum theoretical capacities, not. Actual achievable capacities, especially when you add in the twenty second, twenty three second headways that they're claiming are going to be. Regularly achievable. So um, we have a lot of questions in in all, overall, it's a. It's a a stadium is like the worst um, use case for a gondola because of the capacities. I mean, even with the three S systems that have cabins that could fit up to forty people, that's um. That's just their attempt. That's the maximum they can do to try to um, get to a capacity that can serve a stadium, but even that. You would have to fill up the entire system at a hundred percent capacity for solid two hours just to move twenty percent of the people. And so likely it'll be a lot less than that and then you have to look at the total amount of investment and also the. New infrastructure that would be added into our neighborhoods, which you wouldn't see with pedestrian improvements or bus improvements. You wouldn't see all these massive stations.
Can I add a a brief comment with respect to the bottleneck aspect? Um, you know, a- as Phyllis was noting. It takes two hours to move the number of people through the system that they're talking about. I also sometimes take the the um metro downtown from the west side uh and take the, you know, Dodger Stadium Express buses. Which granted, they they are always jam packed and it does take a little longer than than we would like. Um, L A art has promoted this project as taking seven minutes door to door from Union Station. But that completely eliminates any waiting time. You know, you arrive at Union Station. And you have to get in line and wait for your, you know, assigned time according to how they're talking about doing it now. Um, it's a seven minute trip once you get in the car. Um, but that doesn't account for any. So I I think actually the bottleneck would be worse than the existing Dodger Stadium Express. Um, uh, is the impression that I I have from having studied it.
Um, here, I'm just gonna go, let me see, I I fortunately cannot see who had raised their hands first.
Yes, it's just in order. I can see it. I'm not sure why you can't, but Laura is next.
Oh, yes, yes, okay. Um, Laura, you had a question?
Hey, guys. Now, I just kind of wanted to add to that a little bit. I mean, I've been an advocate in the downtown area for about. Hey, guys. Now, I just kinda wanted to add to that a little bit. I mean, I've been an advocate in the downtown area for about fifteen years. And we've watched um, the heat island effects from all the developments, just turn our streets into a hundred and forty degree temperatures on sidewalks. Um, the idea of taking out, in addition to all this other stuff we're talking about, they wanna take out seventy eight trees um, in front of the station and in front of the park. Um, and pour thousands of pounds of concrete fueling the heat island effect. So for us, there's the, 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 there's no sustainability in that whatsoever and there's no mitigation that will replace those trees. Um, while they're not twenty year old trees, they're fully mature trees and they're in a space that were, they were designed to be in. Um, and so I, you know, I think when we think about sustainability, you know, it's not just about how how we walk and, or how we take a bus to someplace. It has to include the trees in the near, in area. I mean, the downtown area in the last six years has gone from a six percent canopy to almost zero, because the arts district has no canopy whatsoever. Um, and, and that's a serious problem. And I think that alone, I mean, why the park went in on the first place, right, was to give people a space where they can be in nature and and have that in this sort of crazy urban environment. All that to say, I think pretty much everyone, I, I know most of the people on this, on this call are transport, good transportation advocates. Now, we, our, our board works on um have been working on a, a bike lane for inside of the River Channel. We've advocated for bike paths on Sixth Street. So we're spending a lot of time trying to figure that out and I think you know, if part of this is battling just bad design, right? So instead of that, you know, ah, let's put some transportation in without a lot of, a lot of thought to the, what the outcomes are, how they impact the community. We just took a look at a mobility plan that makes absolutely no sense, like we, um, I'm head exploding kind of effect for us and, you know, we ha- we're constantly having to write letters. So, you know, again, every single thing that, that, that Junie and John and John have, have, and Kathleen have talked about all are so incredibly important and I just wanna make sure we don't forget that, that so important nature part of this where this is the only state park within miles. It's one of the only real green spaces that offer canopy, that offer trees, that offer air to breathe in a, in a, in an extreme urban setting. Um, and you know, I know, having been here, I know how hard the Chinatown community, the Solano community, El Pueblo, all of us worked to try to get this park in. Um, and it needs to be respected to prove it is a, a, a park. And then there's all the historical story around that. I think that Junie had pointed out at the beginning of her talk. So just wanted to throw that piece in to sort of have us look at the, the nature aspect and the, and the impact of that on the community. Thank you.
Oh, thanks, Laura. Um, Lisa, do, uh, was King Chung, who's, who's next? Okay.
Yes, King.
Yeah, I'm, I'm him.
Thank you.
You know, um, I think the anti-gondola people uh, talk about all the problems that of this project. And I think that um, uh, we really need to look at alternatives. And um, you know, the L A Times on October fifth had a good article. Um, I think John mentioned a little bit about that, but I think that um, we, um, I wanna bring out a bit more uh, that um, the Dodgers only have one shuttle, which is from Union Station and one park and ride from the South Bay area, only two perfect uh methods. But the Hollywood Bowl had, they have like fifteen park and ride from over the county. And then they have four shuttles that are close, you can park your car close by the Hollywood Bowl and take the shuttle. And um, this is like a lot more ways to come to the um, to the event. And they've been doing it for over fifty years. If that's a problem, I think they would have stopped doing it. The, the newspaper article also mentioned that only five percent of the people that go to Dodger games take the public transit. But twenty four percent are to use uh, public transit to go to Hollywood Bowl. Why can't we just, you know, copy it and really make sure that it work for Dodger Stadium? Unless there's some other reason that we don't know, that I think everybody's trying to find out. You know, I drive up and down Sunset very often, Caesar Chavez during game time from Silver Lake to Chinatown. But they have a dedicated lane from Figueroa. And I'm not sure, I don't have a dedicated lane and Caesar Chavez from uh, Union Station. And there are two cops there, or motorcycle cops escorting the, the buses. I don't see that many buses coming uh, up and down. Uh, that was an empty lane, pretty much empty lane for a few buses to use. I think that we need to make good use of that uh resource. So um, that is my suggestion, study a Hollywood Bowl and you know, see what that can be applicable to the Dodger Stadium instead of the gondola.
Oh, thank you, King. Um, uh, who, uh, let's see, was it Philip that was next? Okay, Philip. Um, and then be, be sure to limit your, um, I see some hands and I just wanna make sure I wanna limit. Um, kind of try to limit and uh, limit your comments and try to make them a little bit more concise, please.
Okay, will do. Hi, Philip Murphy. I'm the president of the Friends of Elysian Park. I just wanna mention, there's not only the L A State Historic Park that's uh impacted by this gondola. It's Elysian Park as well. Elysian Park is the oldest park in L A, established in eighteen eighty six. Six hundred acre park surrounds Dodger Stadium. This uh, gondola is going to impact the park in a major way and all the residents around the park. Uh, it, the gondola, nobody, I don't think, has mentioned yet tonight. Well, Frank McCourt is not an environmentalist, first of all. I hope everybody understands that. Uh, the gondola is going to have LED advertisements on these cabins and on these towers. And Elysian Park is a dark park, which means when soon after the sun goes down, we try to, you know, give the park back to the wildlife and the, and the plants. Uh, it is a green space that is important for L A and the sanity of all those that live around the park, including Echo Park, uh Highland Park, Chinatown, Solano Canyon. I mean, and to just have these huge gondola cabins hovering over the park at night, you know, to and from Dodger Stadium or to and from Dodger Town Mall, which the whole justification for, you know, if, if Frank McCourt can get this Metro Link thing going, uh, he can build his, you know, uh, Dodger Town Mall, you know, in the parking lots. So this is a commercial enterprise that's being um, screened or whatever, however you, that's a sports metaphor for, you know, what Metro is doing for L A Art here. It's, it's just a commercial enterprise that Frank McCourt is, is perpetrating on L A. And I'm all for Dodger baseball. I mean, I grew up watching the Dodgers play the Giants and, you know, I played tons of Little League. I'm all for baseball, but this is, this is about more than that. You know, this is about communities getting hugely impacted by another commercial venture that's just gonna impact the park three hundred and sixty five days a year. If Dodger Town Mall goes in there, we have tremendous parking problems around Dodger Stadium all through baseball season. In Solano Canyon and everywhere else that, you know, where, where people enter the baseball stadium. The gondola is not gonna solve that problem. It's just a lure to bring people to the Dodger Town Mall, which will then operate three hundred and sixty five year, days a year. And we will then have a year round traffic and pollution problem around Dodger Stadium. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Um, was Joanne or Sierra Club Barb Hensley um, next? Just trying to make sure.
I don't know how to say your name. It is G Show?
Oh, G Show, okay. Uh, sorry, G Show?
Uh, yes, it's J Show. Uh, thank you. I mean, to speak, um, I primarily work within an organization that serves many Chinatown residents. And I've seen a lot of folks come out in opposition for the gondola. I myself also oppose the gondola. I think that this is a pretty big opportunity loss. I mean, I, I, I think, one, there's so many needs of Chinatown residents, especially those who have lived there for quite some time. One of the biggest being opposite of that produce. And I feel like instead of investing funds for a gondola where a lot of folks are going to and from, from Dodger Stadium, oh, I mean, a lot of Chinatown residents just don't go to Dodger Stadium, being quite frank. I mean, even getting vaccine treatments, they couldn't get to Dodger Stadium to get vaccines because they didn't have access to cars. So public transit was the only way, way for them to get around. We need to figure out ways to do public transit to and from grocery stores. I mean, from my understanding, a lot of Chinatown residents go from uh, many of the stations there to Alhambur, Amari Park to pick up fresh produce, but it takes an hour, two hours, maybe even longer. The gondola seems like it's gonna have significant environmental impacts. It's not really going to serve Chinatown residents. And it's not facing or addressing many of the significant problems residents have to take care of. I just don't see this as an alignment with residential needs. It's a lot of the issues that I don't really see environmentally. I mean, I personally work as an environmental organizer. Hearing from many of the experts in the room, just talking about how this is not going to provide that traffic mitigation, just continues to solidify reasons why I would oppose the gondola as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, uh, so Sierra Club Barb Hensley next?
Betty, Barbara Hensley here. Um, I am uh, a volunteer chair of the Central Group of the uh Angeles Chapter of the Sierra Club. And uh, the Central Group is the L A area, but I'm here to represent the entire Angeles Chapter of over thirty thousand members. And we are an environmental organization and we impose the gondola. And the reason we oppose the gondola because it harms the environment. It doesn't help it. It doesn't, it's greenwashing. It doesn't reduce um, air pollution. And it impacts greatly a beautiful park that was hard fought um, to get. And open space is very important to us. And this open space would be dramatically impacted by the gondola. So we oppose the gondola. Thanks so much.
Oh, thank you. Um, uh, Joanne?
Yes, um, I'm Chair of the Trees Committee, but I'm not gonna speak about the trees because other people have done it so well. Um, I'm going to uh, mention something that hasn't brought up, been brought up, which are the birds. And um, I suspect that this, the light from this um, gondola operating at night is gonna kill a lot of birds. And I wanna tell you that um, we objected to the D E I R for the Sidewalk Repair Program. And it was sued. Um, and the SEQA attorney, I mean, the SEQA judge ruled for the environmental um, position because he cited letters in the um, comments that were written about the Pacific Flyway and the uh, ill effect uh, to birds, both from the CFAC letter, twenty seven page letter. And uh, it's also the Ali Audubon letter, which the said similar things. Ali Audubon got into it in more detail. I hope that you have comments in the D E I R that have to do with birds because that's, that's a, that's a strong one, I think, for this uh, opposition. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne. Um, Lisa's, Lisa's hand's been up.
It has, and I've been so patient and quiet and well behaved, but I would love to speak. Thank you. Um, I um, live in Silver Lake and uh, have been very, I used to live in Echo Park and have been very affected by the Dodgers games over the years. And I have, uh, David emailed me, um, I'm the ED of the N C S A and David emailed me Halloween night saying that he had a family emergency and could not participate. He did not offer up any alternatives and I am not kidding. I have spent the last day and a half uh, trying to reach everybody I could think of. And I'm not kidding. I tried really, really, really hard to find somebody who could replace him because I too was really, really looking forward to this opportunity for a robust conversation to really have um a forum to hear the facts and have a substantive conversation on the issues. And honestly, I can only conclude, uh, and I, I can only conclude that the pro gondola people decided that uh, they did not want to have that conversation. So uh, that makes me um, grumpy. So there's that. Uh, I do agree with Charles. Charles and I often agree on the big stuff and I agree with Charles. Some of Phyllis's points strike me as a little bit sort of like the classic uh NIMBY type issues that don't resonate with me very much, but a lot of the issues you folks are raising do resonate with me a lot. And I am very, very, very passionate about community engagement and, you know, this sort of process and the fact that they clearly don't want to um, engage uh bothers me a lot. So I do have a question, which is, we came to the party very late. I'm not really sure how that happened, but we really were not on the ball on this. And I know the draft E I R has already been released and the public comment period has already been closed. And the E I R is gonna be released. So is it too late? Uh, what, I mean, I know, I know we could still submit something. Eric is shaking his head. I sort of, you know, excuse me, the, the, the more I learn, the more jaded I'm getting and I, I sort of feel like the system is rigged. So I'd love to hear from folks what can be done. Uh, yeah, that's it.
Look, I, I would just re- reply that, you know, thank you, Lisa, for all your efforts and, and, and we saw them and really appreciate them. And, you know, we're looking forward to this as well. Appreciate this conversation with you all. You know, for three years, uh, at least, even, you know, before, from the time the notice of project came out, even before there was a draft E I R, we were being told by people in the mayor's office that this is a done deal. You're wasting time raising any concerns about it. So, you know, they thought and they still think, I believe, that the fix is in. Um, but you know, we've talked to enough people that we, we have reason to have some hope that that's not true. Um, you know, we've talked with people on the Metro Board and the mayor's office and the council district. Um, and I think talking with you all is important. I think you're an, you're an important voice. You know, you're the neighborhood council sustainability alliance, for goodness sake. You know, and, and I, you know, um, and so to, you know, I think what you, it is too late to submit a comment on the draft E I R, but what you could do that could really have impact would be, you know, when the final E I R comes out. And if it is substantially the same as the draft E I R, you know, we could help you analyze that. Um, you know, I hope you see that we're trying to be as transparent, as objective as we can be about our point of view. Um, I think it would be fair, you know, for this alliance or this committee or this alliance or however you work, to send a letter saying we don't think you should certify this flawed E I R. Uh, you know, the process has not been uh fair and right. Um, you know, there's several things that are, you know, questionable at Ball and potentially, you know, uh, you know, are, are against SEQA. And it is not considering the whole project. Um, And it is not considering the whole project. Um, you know, it's, it's not considering alternatives and, you know, we need, you know, as I, you know, and I think there's two things about that that, you know, I would come back to, to, you know, uh, press a little bit against the NIMBY argument, you know, is that this is really, this is really a regional issue, you know? Is this really the solution we need to transportation in LA, to transportation to Dodger Stadium, to greenhouse gas emissions? And I think, I think after having, you know, gotten into it and done some studies and because, you know, we couldn't get information out of them, that the answer to those questions is no. Um, so I think on, there's on, on a regional level, which is why I'm so grateful to be talking to a citywide group, you know, this is not just about the neighborhoods. That said, I also think that the, that the NIMBY argument in the neighborhood, you know, if applied to the neighborhoods is a little bit unfair. Um, you know, this is more like, you know, the old school urbanism. And I'm talking like the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties when Metro didn't consult anybody. You know, and they rammed freeways through neighborhoods. And, you know, the, uh, it, it's at that scale, that level of impact, it's really an environmental justice issue. And, and so, you know, I, 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 I hear what you're saying, but I have to respectfully disagree.
Well, I don't want to get, take up too much time to get into specifics, so, but we, we could talk offline. There are just certain, um, themes that trigger me a little bit. But anyway, thank you. That's, that's helpful.
Yeah, I know, I would love to hear. I would love to hear what, I would love to hear what triggered those thoughts from both you and Charles so that we can address them.
Fair enough. Yeah, maybe if we have time tonight, maybe we can do that. But Muriel is a very good taskmaster, so not right now.
Also a task manager. Um, that's my work.
Oh, very good. Okay.
Um, uh, so it looks like Raul Mas- Masias was next and then I, I, I'm starting to get a little pattern now. Um, hello?
Raul?
You might be on mute, Raul.
He's not muted.
He's not muted at all. Oh.
He's not talking though.
Now, try again.
Can we check your volume or?
Oh, now he's muted. Now, now he's not muted.
Okay.
Oh, he's trying.
Uh, Raul, why don't you type in the chat? Do you have any questions to put in the chat or just, um, a comment?
Were you talking to me?
No.
No, no, sorry. No, um, Raul's, I think the microphone's broken or it might be.
We'll move on to the next one and Raul can type the chat.
Yeah. Okay, um, Hugo Garcia next?
Hi, everybody. Um, Hugo Garcia, I'm a resident of El Sereno in Northeast LA. Uh, I work with environmental justice and community engagement, a board member of Save Elephant Hill, and I work with Clock Shop. Now, just thinking about another area that I haven't heard is, um, wha- what happens in the case of a mechanical breakdown? Or if somebody, uh, aboard the gondola is having a medical emergency in, in, like, say, going over the park? And, um, or, or I'm, I'm trying to picture, you know, how, how that would be if you have emergency vehicles zooming, you know, barreling into LA State Historic Park. You know, that, that kind of thing. In addition to all the other points that had great points that have been raised, like those kind of specific things that could occur, that, that would occur at, at some point in time, maybe, who knows repeatedly, um, what, what's gonna happen with that? You know, uh, another thing is that we've had, uh, three years of an annual kite festival that has grown tremendously and has citywide uh, implication support. I think there was five thousand people there in May. Uh, can we fire our kites and they're, they're gonna get all caught up in the, in the gondola? Are we gonna have to stop having community events? You know, wha- what about that? You know, those kind of occurrences are, are those addressed in, in the EIR, in the draft EIR? You know, and these are gon- are real on the ground things that would be coming up to the parks' community and affecting the entire city population that attends the parks. So that's why, uh, we oppose and we want to stop the gondola. Things like that also. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Melanie Winter?
Uh, Paul Bowers is actually next.
Oh, he was next, sorry. Oh, Paul, okay. He was my former co-chair at Echo Park Neighborhood Council.
Hi, guys. Thanks for having me and thanks for having this meeting. This is great. We really need to learn more. Um, I, in general and in principle, like the idea of a gondola. Um, because it's nothing like a freeway. In fact, it's the opposite of a freeway. Um, and I think the, um, traffic from Union Station to Dodger Stadium is a issue that I don't think there are many other alternatives to. Um, however, the devil is in the details. And if there are LED light advertisements happening, totally against it. I'm not for or against it at this point because I haven't researched and I'm very curious to know more. I'm just brand newly back on the Echo Park Neighborhood Council and I'm on the, I'm the Chair of the uh, Liveability and Sustainability Committee. So I invite, um, anybody from this group to, uh, get in touch with me at Paul BEPNC to possibly schedule a community forum and see if we can get the, um, presenters to show up, um, at a physical meeting. I actually was uh, didn't check the email very well and I drove all the way over to Echo, to Dodger Stadium because I've been there in the past for other events. Seems like they ought to host an event of this type at their Dodgers Club. But, uh, please reach out to me at Paul BEPNC and, uh, let's talk about more um, opportunities to get neighborhood input about what really is proposed.
Is it all together, Paul?
Yeah.
At Gmail, right? It's
I'm sorry, yeah, at, at gmail dot com. Sorry about that.
Okay, that was the part I was wondering about.
Paul BEPNC, like Echo Park Neighborhood Council at gmail dot com.
Got it.
Thank you guys for putting this on. This is great.
We'll, we'll be in touch.
Uh, can I respond about the transit alternatives real quick? Um, in the draft EIR, when they look at transit alternatives, when they look at buses, they, they ruled out the implementation of them because they said that, oh, a gondola supposedly would transport seven thousand people or sorry, ten thousand people per like seven minutes? And they said in order for buses to reach that metric, we would need to run one bus every forty-nine seconds. And so they keep using their vision of the gondola, like ultimate solution to solve the traffic. And they didn't even do a traffic study before they proposed this. And like earlier, like Charles, when you asked your like transit question about like, oh, like, what are you, if, what you're proposing, like, would it work? I thought that was a weird question because like everybody here actually is like residents and neighbors and community members. I just want to uplift that we're not actually like the ultimate transit experts. A lot of us do know a lot. Actually, we do have some transit experts. I should take that back, but we're also not like working for Metro. The people we trusted to do that work didn't do that. The people we trusted to do that have actually played a major like favoritism game. And if that's how they're looking at how to serve the community, like how can we trust anything about this project? Like, our ask for e-buses is actually so simple. And, um, as Jay Show brought up before, this neighborhood is incredibly service poor. And as we fight for those services to return to the community, we don't even have transit to access them. It takes like an hour, two hours, multiple buses, um, especially for a like elder heavy community to access. It's like, it just doesn't make sense at all. Um, so I just wanted to add that and that we have more hands. And then I also wanted to mention that, uh, Zochiel wants to speak as well, but she's not able to hit the raise hand feature. So I'm gonna add her to the queue after Eric, if that's okay.
Can I add a, a, can I add a brief comment in response to the last, uh, uh, comment as well? You know, the Dodger Stadium right now between games and special events has something like a hundred and ten uh, games, uh, uh, you know, if they make the playoffs and, and get deep into the playoffs, and then there's a few more concerts and special events and so forth. This gondola is stationary. If you had electric buses instead that could be used all over the city, they would be available on days that there are not games and special events, uh, for other purposes. So it's a solution that can serve more than this one, uh, one problem, right? Unless, unless there's some reason to have something going there every single day, like development at Dodger Stadium that is not disclosed, so.
Uh, Melanie Winter?
Hi, thanks. Um, when this was first proposed, I was immediately thinking about the Roosevelt Island tram in New York City. And I, you know, was looking at an old video of the Roosevelt Island tram and it was like, oh, yeah, well, this is like no, that they, it's four times higher. And they don't really even fly over a lot of Manhattan neighborhood areas. They're, they're flying over the river, but it's much higher in the air and doesn't disrupt communities to the extent that this one does. It is a big piece of infrastructure, but that's just, that was back when I first heard of it and I just couldn't see when I first heard that this was gonna be flying so low. That was shock number one, that its impact in the park is another no-go. Um, it really seems like it is erasing both Chinatown and Chivas Ravine and their needs, which have just so much built up redress that's deserving. So to, to have this sort of late-stage capitalism uh, thing get so much support from City Hall and so much traction and the usual, you know, don't bother, it's a done deal response when the analysis is so lacking. It's just, i- it's very infuriating to me. Um, I know that some people who don't live there might think it's a NIMBY response, but you have to try to imagine if this were your community. And especially if you're living in a community that's under-resourced, um, how it, how it's going to negatively impact the community that's already negatively impacted. And how that much capital is available to go to something that is profit-driven rather than um, community or climate, true climate adaptation. It really feels like, you know, like with Harvard Westlake, they're like, what words do we need to say to sell this sucker? So that it sounds like we're doing a good thing when it's really just profit. And it's another one of those very infuriating, very infuriating, um, proposals. We have so much to accomplish and so little time and so little resources. So it's, it's always very dispiriting to see private capital and where their priorities are. And this is absolutely about future development up there and, you know, not benefiting Angelenos in general and, and taking resources away from, from us. I just, I don't understand why electric buses or an electric people mover or some other smarter alternative to this that starts with the community needs and builds up from there. Why wouldn't we do that? Why are we doing this? And the answer is money and it makes me mad. And I especially hate that there's an administration in place who is, comes from the background that they do, that is taking this line. Um, and I think everybody needs to speak up. And I am in vehement opposition to this. So that's all I had to say.
Thanks, Melanie. Um, uh, Eric?
Hey, everyone. I just wanted to say, uh, so I'm also on the Friends of Allegiant Park Board. Uh, but I also wanted to say as a transit nerd, not a transit expert, but a transit nerd, uh, one of the things I do is look at how projects are perceived in the transit world globally. Uh, all of LA's projects are commented on by people around the globe because the transit, uh, industry is pretty small and has a lot of really cool engineers in it. And they like to share what is good and bad about other cities' products. Uh, I've never, ever seen anyone praising this project because it isn't a transit project. It's an attraction. Uh, the transit community has weighed in and they said this is an absolute billionaire boondoggle attraction. It is not transit. It should never be referred to as transit. It was actually kind of insulting to transit engineers all over the world. I just wanted to throw that in there. Um, it's an attraction. It's not transit. That's all.
I love having, um, transit nerd comments, sorry.
Oh, yeah, for sure. I was gonna say the same. Yeah, um, and that's a super important point. And Eric asked a question in the chat, uh, which, if my voice survives, I thought I'd try to answer briefly about, uh, meetings with elected officials and where they're at, you know, the key decision, first key decision-making body here is the Metro Board. We've met with, um, Karen Bass and her staff. Karen's mayor, Bass is now the Chair of Metro. Um, and we've met with, um, uh, Holly Mitchell, Supervisor Mitchell's staff. Um, and Supervisor Horvath's staff. And all, all of them, um, and we've also met numerous times with, um, Councilmember Unisa Hernandez and her staff. And all of them have said that they can't, you know, they don't want to prejudice the position that they're taking. They're still gathering information. I, I do believe, you know, they've really heard our concerns and are taking them seriously. Um, and, um, you know, I think that's, um, uh, you know, found it especially true of, of Supervisor Horvath's staff. Um, I, you know, I, I think also of the, of the mayor's office. And, you know, most certainly of Councilmember Hernandez. They're, they're, they're all, um, quite concerned about this project. And again, from a, you know, a regional perspective, I mean, that, that Supervisor Horvath is concerned and one of her big concerns is you know, she's totally against spending public money on this. And if you have this, you know, plan to turn it over to a nonprofit, it's very, very clear that's in order to get public monies and grants, you know, to fund it. Um, you know, they're, they, uh, Horvath staff, you know, they're, they, they definitely like heard the community concerns as well.
Oh, sorry, before we go to Lisa, could we go to Zochiel who had trouble?
Oh, yeah, Sochi, sorry. I, I, I saw that in the chat. Um, uh, Sochi?
So she, are you able to unmute?
Is it one of the numbers? I'm trying to.
I think, are you able to ask that number to unmute?
I, I don't know. Let's see. That's star six. Does she need to do that? Star six. Oh, um, let's see.
If you can hear us and you can see your number pad, can you press the star and then the six?
Her number pad? I, I don't understand.
On the phone, if you're on a phone, that's how you speak, is you use your phone.
Okay, I see.
At first you are listening to me. I don't know what happened.
Oh, there she is. Okay, great.
Oh, can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Sochi Mancanilla and, uh, um, and I oppose the gondola very strongly. And, uh, I live at William Mead uh, William Mead Home in the, or the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles. And this is only two blocks from LSA Historic Park, where the gondola will pass destroying all the trees and, uh, lots of programming that we have in the park. And, uh, I love my beautiful park, LSA Historic Park. And I want this path to be protected. Please help us. In, uh, all the community of William Mead is opposing the gondola very strongly because we live very close to the park where this horrible gondola is gonna pass by. And I'm, I'm hosting the, uh, a program in the park since, uh, twenty seventeen. And uh I belong to a group of promoters from the park. And now I am I'm in the board of HCNNC. And uh, well, I I I thank you for this opportunity to be talking about against the gondola. I I really don't want this gondola in our communities and in in our beautiful parks. Uh, my communities are low-income people, you know, we live here and it's uh a low-income families. They work hard for 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 their, to put their bread on the table. And in this, um, Frank McCord will charge forty dollars for each person to get to get in the gondola, to go to Dodger Stadium. And we don't need this gondola. We already have free transportation. And uh we must start this gondola. I would like this uh the elected official to help us because uh we need help as soon as possible to start this gondola and help our communities. We don't want our our beautiful park to be destroyed with this horrible gondola. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sochi. Um, Le- uh Lisa again?
Yes, thank you. Um, two things. One, Eric, I'm I'm really glad you mentioned that uh transit experts and nerds alike are not uh fans of it. Because I've thought about, I've wondered about that and wondered about other uh gondolas. You know, there's the one um in uh like, what's it called? The one near Palm Springs and there's one in Portland. Um, where I I'm from near Portland and it turns out David Greenwich is actually from Portland. Um, do you happen to know if there are other gondolas that are considered, you know, better than that that are transit or or good for transit and that are better or more than just attractions? That's one que- that's a question. And then one one thing I wanted to share that was related to, I think, uh, something Melanie put in the chat. We, the NCSA, are on the um LA Twenty Eight Sustainability Working Group and Climate Resolve, which is the group that created zero emission or zero, I thought it was zero emissions transit, um, which is the same thing basically as LA Art, um, are also on the LA Twenty Eight Sustainability Working Group. So it's all, it's been very, very civil so far. Everybody's really nice. But I'm starting to think it's probably gonna get a little bit more complicated and a little bit more tense in the foreseeable future. So I thought I should mention that.
To answer your question, yes, there are amazing gondolas all over the world. Uh, the one thing you want with a with a gondola that that does well, all-day operations. Uh, something with a start prime, like a six P M. Game prime, seven P M. Game prime, is the worst thing you could ever do uh for a gondola. His gondola operation cannot expand or contract like a bus system can. Gondolas are stuck with how many cars are on the line and they cannot accelerate or decelerate. And so uh they absolutely don't work where you need to get people, uh, a lot of people very quickly, the worst system. When you have twelve-plus operation hours a day, it works great.
Thank you. Very helpful.
I think the classic is in, if I if I have this right, Eric is in Medellin. You know, where a gondola was built to connect, you know, the the um the favelas or the, you know, the poor disadvantaged communities in the hillsides that didn't have good access to jobs, to store life in the city. And, you know, where a traffic solution was, you know, would would not have been really been, you know, possible, maybe, you know, and certainly not easy, you know, because it's already densely populated hillsides. And, you know, I mean, that's the classic example of where this is a new solution that really does the job. And it's a job, you know, that also is does, it, you know, serves environmental and economic justice. You know, it's really the polar opposite of this.
I like what I think Joanne just put in the chat. Right? If if they develop uh the parking lots, then yes, it will be serving that and totally undoing the whole purpose of resolving the traffic, of course. And perpet- the whole Chavez Ravine thing is what gets me on this whole thing. It's like the perpetuation generations later of, I don't know, it's like the whole cyclical nature of the thing is what really gets me. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, and I want to say in Medellin, there was extensive public consultation about that project. So it's called up as a good project. And plus, a lot of um people have given the gondola a lot of credit for lowering crime. But something that is has been studied and said in papers is that they, the government invested seven times as much in the community as they did in the gondola. So the gondola was more of a symbol of the investments that they were making in the community, not not driver of all of that change.
Mm-hmm. Interesting.
And the Rio gondola is kind of an example of the opposite, which was built for the Olympics in twenty sixteen and then closed down weeks later because of
Oh, wow.
no funding for maintenance.
Wow.
And that actually raises an environmental issue which we did not get into tonight. But, you know, at some point, a gondola may need to be decommissioned. And then what happens if it's owned by a nonprofit that doesn't have any resources? Um, you know, it's a little bit of a problem that needs to be resolved before it's approved.
Alina S. says, oh, I know, yeah. Um, Alina?
Hi, yeah, thank you. Um, I am a resident of Victor Heights and I've been kind of tracking the progress of this project. I appreciate you offering space to answer questions. Um, I'm just curious because I know parking is in an impact that's addressed under CEQA, at least in the transportation section. Just vehicle miles traveled, which from this discussion tonight, it seems like they're analyzing as less than significant in the draft DIR. But um it seems like most people drive, I mean, today drive to Union Station to then take the bus to Dodger Stadium. And I can't anticipate that that would change, given the lack of consistent public transit um here. So I'm just curious, what's the best way, given that parking isn't an issue addressed under CEQA, how that could be raised, given that I think, you know, if people would drive to the gondola, there'd be increased demand for parking and that would probably be felt within the immediate communities. So again, given that that's not necessarily uh an issue under CEQA, how can that be brought up?
Well, it's still a vehicle miles traveled issue, right? So if the gondola turns out to be something that draws drivers to the Chinatown neighborhood or Union Station for that matter, and they would not have made that trip otherwise, then those are new vehicle miles traveled, not, you know, we're not getting rid of vehicle miles traveled. The the assumption that the D E I R makes is that people will use the existing subway system to get to Union Station and not some other method. Um, but um LA Art actually did uh uh um have a study to discuss. You know, everyone was very concerned early on in Chinatown about the parking issues. So they went ahead and did a study, even if it wasn't required under um CEQA. And what's the purpose of a study to figure out if Chinatown has enough capacity to deal with the parking demand from the gondola? If the, you know, it's sort of an admission that they plan to use Chinatown as a parking lot for the gondola, right? Um, what they found was that, yeah, there's no significant impact because there's plenty of parking available. So it suggests that that's the way they conceive of Chinatown as a parking lot for the gondola.
And they counted a lot of parking that isn't actually available to them, including the parking lot for LA State Historic Park, which closes at sunset. And then a lot of um development sites that have already been approved for housing, so.
Okay, thank you.
The parking study wasn't, uh, has it has a lot of criticisms against it.
Um, I'm kind of, let's see, I'm, I I feel bad that Raoul wasn't able to, you know, ask his question. I don't think you wrote anything in the chat. Um. Well, this was certainly a very robust a discussion, like just for one side alone, we we got this so much time covered. So I could only imagine if the other side had come, how long this this discussion probably would have lasted until ten. But, you know, um, you know, there's a lot to be done. Um, I I be, I think there was someone had put in the petition in the chat. Um, um, are there any, is there a timeline for us? Um, you know, I I know that John and um Phyllis had mentioned that it was a little bit too late to comment on anything about like Metro, but to like, just to reach out to. I I think there was like an email in the chat from someone in Metro to email regarding the the D E I R, D E E R, D E I R.
Yeah, there is a link to Corey Zelmer's um email address, I think. Laura, maybe you could throw that up in the chat again if you have it handy. Um, it's not too late to make a a kind of general comment, right? I mean, it's too late to comment on the draft DIR. The way CEQA works, you comment on the draft DIR and as long as you do that by the deadline uh for comments, they have to provide a written response in the final DIR. So, um, but it's not too late to comment on the final DIR to the, you know, to the Metro Board when they consider it or to any of their committees. Um, and we're just waiting to get the final DIR to see whether they've, you know, adequately addressed uh any or some or whatever of our, you know, many comments that have been that have been made. Um, and and, you know, depending on what the final DIR says, we'll certainly be submitting additional comments to the record to say whether we think they did an adequate job addressing those comments. I have a sneaking suspicion they may not adequately address some of them. So um we do anticipate um communicating more with Metro about the final DIR. Um, that's all part of making a record, you know, during the CEQA process. So and and then in addition to that, of course, you can always reach out to your supervisor um or the supervisors in general to let them know what you think about the project and whether or not they should certify the the DIR and approve the project.
Yeah, I'm gonna be a little more political than um John. I think, you know, what this group could do, which I think would have real impact. Um, you know, is if you, if you decided um, you know, to express your concerns about this project and about the flawed nature of the DIR, a letter to Mayor Bass and to Deputy Mayor Randall Winston and to his deputy for transportation, whose name is escaping me at the moment, but I can I can find it for you and I can find the emails.
I think that's Randall Winston.
Did I say Randall, the Randall, Randall Winston's the deputy mayor and then his uh deputy for transportation? Anyway, if you wrote something to the three of them, I think it would be very powerful right now. And then I agree with John that um if you also uh wanted to, you know, express your concerns um to the supervisors, um, you know, that are, that represent parts of LA, um, since you are all important constituents, that that would that would be powerful. And then I think if, you know, and if you and if you did that and then when the final DIR comes out, if you had it, if you had the um, you know, bandwidth to look at it again and express yourselves to the whole Metro Board at that point, um, that could be powerful to express yourselves to the whole Metro Board before they vote on whether to certify the DIR. Those are kind of the, th- those are the sort of big inflection points in front of us right now.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so uh me and Lisa had talked about, you know, a potential, we could do like a potential sidewalk and then um like moving on to a like a vote within the committee, but not not tonight, but like either through email. And then we would move it to through our steering board and then we would move it to our monthly meeting. But I think time is of the essence.
I would be happy to meet anyone down at the park if they want to.
Yeah, we'd be happy to um take anyone through the the park vistas. And um, you know, there are other things that the park more broadly affected to there. You know, it's an archaeological site, for one. There are many, many impacts to the park that we haven't even touched upon. And so seeing it at the ground level um is helpful and we'd be happy to host you.
I'm just trying to visualize one of those little trains while I'm on a hill being like twenty feet over my head.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's why it would be wonderful if any of you would like to come down and visit. You know, that park is a not just a, you know, an incredible asset for, you know, the park for neighborhoods of northeast LA and Chinatown that fought for it. It's an asset for the whole city and it's asset for the whole region and it's an asset for the whole state. And and I mean, again, it's why I bristle a little bit at any NIMBY, you know, saying it.
Oh, my gosh.
I know, I know, I know. I'm just, I'm sorry. I'm, I I get it.
No, okay, I'll just, let me just say, and and this is gonna, some people are not gonna like this, but just since it keeps coming back. Some, when people talk about some of the dangers or liquefaction and and some of those things, I know some people aren't gonna like hearing that. But I just, there are some things that are always mentioned, always mentioned about when any development goes in. And, you know, there are always dangers, always dangers with any development. And I just think, you know, those come with the territory. And I I've personally, I've gotten a little
Yeah, I know, Lisa.
tired of hearing them. And so that's me. And you might not like that about me, but that's just me and I'm just gonna own it. So you can dislike me for that, but that's me.
No, I don't. I don't. I I I love that you brought it up and I want to follow up with the conversation to learn more about what are some of those things that we might say that people might hear.
And it's just me. You know, you're always gonna get, you know, somebody's always gonna dislike something about somebody, right?
I know, but 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 I, yeah, and I just want to, and Muriel, I mean, I, or for all of you, you know, I mean, that for me was the turning point, you know, when I was, you know, on that hill and, you know, I'm a little bit over six feet tall. And I thought about these huge gondola cars going twenty feet over my head every twenty-three seconds. You know, and I had a, and you know, and then I had coffee with Jonathan Parfrey because he said he wanted to talk. And he told, he told me to my face that the gondola wouldn't even go over the park.
Hmm.
And and, you know, that it wouldn't have any impact on the park. And that's what I meant when I started out by saying like the, you know, not just the ghosting, but the gaslighting and, you know, it's that's what has kind of, I mean, and 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 it's being in that park and it was, you know, that. And uh then all the community members you see who are here, you know, um, but, you know, there was, there was part of it. I think that if you go there and you think about it, you'll be like, this is, this is crazy.
Yeah. Well, Jonathan, I was emailing Jonathan a month ago about this and he was super responsive, back and forth, back and forth. And then I was texting him yesterday or the day before. Crickets.
You know, I had a very similar experience to John, except that it wasn't from standing in the park. It was from reviewing the, it was about eight thousand pages of of DIR, a draft DIR. But one of, part of those pages included a description of the rights of way that would be used for the gondola alignment. And there was really no distinction made between public lands that were like streets, public right, those types of public rights of way and a state historic park. You know, as if it's just any other kind of public land that can be used for however we want. Um, I just found that incredibly disrespectful.
Yeah, and I would just add to to John, to both Johns, both the Johns, um, points.
Yeah, and I would just add to to John, to both Johns, both the Johns um points. I mean, our, the final paragraph of our comment letter to on the draft DIR, LA River State Park Partners was, you know, New Yorkers would never tolerate an aerial highway through Central Park. You know, why do these neighborhoods have to suffer this fate that, you know, people look at an open space like a park as just a blank slate through which you can add a new use. Um, and that is not what public park land is when it's moved into the public domain for the benefit of the public. It's not open space anymore. So it's um, it does change your perspective on, you know, why, why there is, there's an acceptability to treat this park um as open for other uses, as if the intrinsic value of the health and wellness generational benefit of an open space in historically underserved neighborhood is is not a sufficient use of it.
And I like to say there's a farmer's market there every Thursday, so if you want to meet there on a Thursday, that'd be great.
Oh.
And it's right where the entire, the station would take up that whole area at the entrance of the park.
Oh, okay. That could, that would be a good, okay, that kind of just. That sounds great. Okay, um, but still email me just so that maybe we could all kind of lock into time. We can all meet each other in person, you know. Awesome. Okay, so it is about to be ten o'clock. We are going a little bit over time. It's usually, we usually do go over time, but this has been a very necessary and robust conversation. Um. If anyone would like to stay, I'm gonna conduct a little bit of our committee business. Um, we had pushed back a couple of our agenda items up up into our December meeting. So if anyone who enjoyed coming to this meeting, um, there, we are, you guys are more than welcome to come to our December meeting, our January meeting, I mean, our monthly meetings moving forward. Um.
I'm actually gonna sign off. I just wanted to say thank you. I'm actually talking to you from the East Coast, so it's midnight for me.
Oh, goodness. And so is Alex.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk with the group. It's been a really interesting conversation and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna sign off too. Thanks a lot.
Oh, thank you, John. Thank you for John.
Thank you. Um. Oh, Philip, Philip has one more thing to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, as final thought, keep in mind who's behind this gondola project. It is Frank McCourt. He was the worst Dodger owner. I've lived here uh right near the ballpark for over twenty-five years, who is absolutely without doubt the worst owner of the Dodgers in our experience. Why would you trust him with this project? That, enough said.
Uh, and Diana, Di, oh my, I'm so sorry if I mispronounced your name. Oh, thank you, Philip. Um, Diana, sorry.
No worries. It it is Diana. Um, and Diana, also a stop the gondola supporter. I live in Lincoln Heights and I was actually a child advocate for LA State Historic Parks, so it's very dear to my heart and I I still use it. I run. I actually take, I do the route around the the park. So I go up a spring, up through Broadway and come back and loop around. So the route is specifically where I I take my my mental health stroll. And I think I just want to conclude by saying that, like, why would we wanna prioritize any project that really doesn't think about equity, does not think about environmental justice and really is putting profit over people? And this is, this is all that I see, like neighborhoods being impacted, park users being impacted, tax dollars being impacted, when we know that, like, there are so many other issues and potentially other alternatives that would be better use of any money, whether it's public or or private. And it would not impact the neighborhoods that are being impacted if this were to go through. So last word is, don't, don't support anything that is is uh supporting profit over the the well-being of a community, the well-being of its people.
Thank you, Diana. That was very, um, that was a very compelling story. And also, yeah, I ran around there too and it was, it's like a solid mile if you're inside the park, like that little pathway. It's a solid mile and I, I don't think you, I think they have like a curfew now because it's starting to get dark early. But um, I do enjoy that park as well. Um. Let's see. Um, okay, so yeah, it's already nine. Um, uh. So are there, um, are there any new announcements aside from the timeline that we are gonna propose for moving forward with the stop? Like with whoever, um, who would, whoever agrees and um whoever feels strongly would like to conduct with Stop the Gondola, but on top of that, there's other stuff within our committee that we need to get on the agenda for next week.
I just want, we should mention that we do have an event uh Saturday, our Native Plants event. I'll put it, I'll put a link to it in the chat.
Okay.
It's gonna be um off of San Fernando.
It's in Cypress.
And it should be fun. Is that where it is? I always get confused, so thank you.
Yeah, it's like a long, I want to say San Fernando.
It's on San Fernando Road, yeah.
Yeah.
Off of San Fernando Road, at at Los Rios, uh, um, is that what it's called? Los Rios, uh, that, yeah. Oh, Rio de Los Angeles, that's what it is. Rio de, Rio de, the Los Angeles State Historic Park. Sorry, that's what it is.
So we have that coming up. Charles will be hosting it. So there was that nice gentleman that was who came to our meeting today. Um. Let's see, uh, is there any other announcements or future agenda items? Um, I know Barbara, she had a um drop off, but she wanted to mention that there is another um public forum feedback on the digital billboards. Um, I'll probably send an email to the Transportation List Serve. Um, but I wanted to add that as well. Okay, well, I. Okay, well, um, I'm gonna for, I'm gonna follow up on um doing the meetup at the park. Um, that sounds like I I definitely would want to do that, like if, not Thursday, if I wanted to, I'd I'd try to maybe do it on my own time, but then like it'd be cool if some of us came out as a group, um, you know, masks and um, uh, would like to check it out in person so we could kind of see and visualize what would possibly go on. Um. But again, thank you so much. This is an unprecedented turnout for my committee meeting. Um, I've never had this many people come at this one time, so um, thank you so much for coming and um everyone have a great weekend and hopefully I'll see you guys on Saturday for the Native Plants demonstration. And everyone have a good night.
Thank you, guys.